Call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board Trustee Regular Meeting for Thursday, January 16th. I've forgotten how to do this, it's been so long. Time is seven o'clock, and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Sals.
Here.
Trusty Sals.
Here.
Trusty Hammons.
Here.
Trusty Collins.
Here.
Trusty Dallery.
Here.
Trusty Collins.
Here.
Trusty Fulton.
Here.
Village Manager Scalera.
Here.
Village Attorney Melina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Kathy Haley and Attorney Marv.
And Michael Moes would be here any minute. He was finishing up some paperwork and there's bad traffic on the Eisenhower.
Lance, I want to switch your names.
Oh, I switched to make it easier for him to slip in here and then I didn't switch the name. I was trying to see if anyone noticed. Actually, you'll find him somewhat surprising when he comes in. He has something in common with Trusty Collins.
Another superstitious person. So if you'll please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome back to everyone after a long holiday break. Good to see everybody back and see folks in the audience. If you're here with us tonight, you're welcome to speak during our meeting at any time. You can speak during public comment or if you prefer to wait until a particular agenda item comes up, you're welcome to speak then also. First up tonight, our presentation, some public comment. And first, we're going to hear from former Village President Paul Stack, who's going to tell us about a proposal to pursue UNESCO World Heritage Site status for the Village of Riverside. President Stack?
Mr. President and board members, thank you very much for giving me an invitation here. This idea came to my wife and I sometime this summer. We were vacationing in Bermuda where we have a property in St. George's, which is the old historic capital of Bermuda. And St. George's was listed as a World Heritage Site about five years ago. And as we were walking around the town, it's a very old town, I became curious as to what exactly is involved in listing a property on a World Heritage Site. So I spent some time looking at some of the research that's available, easily available, about becoming on, being listed on the World Heritage Site. It became apparent to me that I think Riverside has a potential to be listed. The World Heritage Site is the highest listing you can give for a historic property. Right now Riverside is a National Historic Landscape District, which is the highest designation you can get from the federal government. The World Heritage Site is a product of the UNESCO, the United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization. It's a long process to become listed. In the United States, we got listed fairly quickly for the Village of Riverside as a landscape district. And I suspect the Arcade Building will get listed fairly quickly too, based upon what I thought was just a fabulous restoration of it. In the World Heritage Site though, the UNESCO has taken a position that they are going to have extremely high standards. And they have not rejected, but they have not accepted far more than they have accepted. They keep things just sort of, apparently they don't want to hurt anybody's feelings by accepting things, so they simply get tabled forever. In the United States, we have a very few number of World Heritage Sites. And on the documents I have in front of you, you can see that properties listed on the World Heritage Site. We have 21 in the United States. They're broken into cultural, natural and mixed. Cahokia Mounds is the closest status in downstate Illinois. And as you can see, none of these are residential. You know, Monticello perhaps, but I mean, these are not communities, these are not towns. These are either a natural site like the Everglades or Carlsbad Caverns, or they're an extremely important piece of human construction. Now, the procedure that's followed for a World Heritage Site is you go through a number of agencies. You have to work initially with the United States Department of Interior. And their people work with you to decide, to help you put the application together, decide whether or not you're worthy of being put on what's called a tentative list. A tentative list is assembled by each country. And that tentative list is then given to the diplomatic corps of that country. So we would go, if the Department of Interior accepts us, we would go to the State Department. The State Department would then put us on a tentative list. That tentative list then periodically is submitted to UNESCO. And then you go through multiple committees at UNESCO as they review the property. In the United States, right now, we have 13 properties on the tentative list. This is on the first. And you have, again, the only residential ones are the Frank Lloyd Wright buildings. These dates next to them, by the way, are the dates they were put on the list, 2008. That's where they still are. So we're five years after they've been put on the list. These are now slowly being put in front of the UNESCO. The San Antonio-Francais Commission is the Alamo. And that is going now to the United Nations. I think, so I want to say first of all, this is a pretty high reach. You have thousands of properties in the United States that are worthy of designation as a National Historic Landscape or National Historic Building. Of these, you have really very, very few because of the criteria that's required to get on UNESCO. For a property to go on UNESCO, it has to be important in the overall world culture. So that you may have a building where Rutherford B. Hayes was born, and it may have local historic value, but it would have no value to the people of China or would have no value to the people of Brazil or France. And so you have to meet this very high standard. I'll go into that a little bit, as to how I came. My initial reaction was that I don't think it's going to work, but the more I thought about it and the more I looked, the more I believe it will work, that we will be able to get listed. The next handout I had was for the tentative lists, and that goes through the ones where we've talked about. They're all, we're submitted March 1st to the State Department. And now they are in the process of being submitted to the United Nations. The next one is the Frank Lloyd Wright Building. This is an application that is being submitted to the UNESCO by our State Department. I have not talked to anybody who prepared this application, but it became, I think, fairly obvious to me that what has happened here, they're listing 11 properties as a serial nomination. And I think the reason they did that is they felt that their chances of getting accepted by UNESCO for a single structure were very poor. But by combining all of these 11 properties that run the gamut of Frank Lloyd Wright's creativity, from residential to commercial to every kind, from the Unity Temple and so forth, to show the span and the depth of Wright's expertise and Wright's influence, that they have a much better chance. And in fact, I believe that at this point, every property that has been submitted to the UNESCO by the Department of State has ultimately been accepted. None of them have been rejected. But this gives you a chance to see exactly what is involved. This is a description of, first of all, of the individual properties, and then they talk about the justification of the outstanding universal value. And that is the case that Riverside would have to make, that we would be, we have an The other one is, there are not too many, there are some World Heritage Sites which actually are living towns. I put in the approval of St. George's there because that's one of the few where people actually live in the town, and they talk about it. This was submitted not by Bermuda, but it was submitted by the United Kingdom because Bermuda is a crown colony. And it's kind of interesting to read, to see what goes on. Here's why I thought we had a chance. And that's in the last group of documents. If you see paragraph 77, the committee, and they're talking about, that's the UNESCO Committee, considers a property as having outstanding universal value if the property meets one or more of the following criteria. There are two criteria that apply to Riverside. Number two, we exhibit an important interchange of human values in the area or in developments in town planning and landscape design. And I am emphasizing not merely landscape design, but the town planning aspect. And then we come into point four, which is we are an outstanding example of a technological sample or landscape which represents a significant stage in human history. Very few landscapes right now are World Heritage Sites, none in the United States. The last page has two points which are relevant to us. Number 78, to be deemed of outstanding universal value, a property must also meet the conditions of integrity and/or authenticity. It must have an adequate protection and management system to ensure its safeguarding. That means a formal plan to ensure the integrity of what's proposed to be listed. 79 is authenticity. The properties nominated must meet the conditions of authenticity. I think we're okay there. That is to make sure that you don't have sort of a Disneyland version of a Victorian home, you know, type of thing. We are authentic. If you look at the map that was prepared by Olmsted and Vox, we're, I think, well within the bounds of authenticity. What I have proposed is a small committee that will do the research necessary to get the application done. The Department of Interior has its own criteria outside of UNESCO. The first criteria is that the property has to have the highest Department of Interior designation, which we have. There is no higher designation than the National Historic Landscape District. The second one, which applies to the United States but does not necessarily apply to other countries because it doesn't apply at St. George's, is you need the permission of all of the owners to do this. Now, my first thought was, well, that's a deal killer. We can't do that. Because having been Village President, I can tell you that I can't get three people in Riverside to agree on the time of day, much less to grant rights to the United Nations. But then, I started thinking about what are we talking about here at Riverside? The Riverside Public Library has two books that they've published and are available for sale, which relate to the early days of Riverside. One, which I think is probably the most popular, is a sales brochure. And it talks about how during the summer Riverside's always cooler than the city of Chicago, and during the winter it's always warmer, and so forth. And it's got pictures of houses. Olmsted probably had nothing to do with that. It's strictly a sales brochure, but it's illustrated and it's fun. One that's far more important for our needs, and thank God it got preserved, and how it got preserved, I don't know. And that was Olmsted's report to the Riverside Development Company. And this is when he came out to look at what basically just sort of blasted farmland on the banks of a river. And it talked about what he proposed and how he proposed to do it. And that is the charter. What is critical in his report, and what's critical to us right now, are the properties that are under the control of the village, the commons and the setbacks. We would not need to control the individual properties, the houses. In fact, Olmsted makes a point in his plan, to his report to the Riverside Development Commission, which is, I can't stop people from building ugly houses. However, by putting in setbacks, I can ensure that they're far enough back from the street that they don't bother people. And so the part of Riverside that we would need the consent on is the part that is under the control of this board. Now, when Riverside was laid out, of course, it didn't have a municipal government. And this is part of the town planning. We have zoning in effect, but that zoning didn't control how Riverside got built. And I think the question really kind of arises, the idea of an ideal suburb or an ideal planned community is a great idea. Why didn't anybody do it first? It was because Olmsted used covenants prior to zoning. And he imposed these restrictions on what you could do. And the universal effect of what Olmsted did back in 1869 was to show that a community could impose restrictions on the ownership of property. Zoning in the United States was not constitutional until 1926. So you had the whole world, and it was like, if you will, like Houston, Texas, which has no zoning, where you could have a cemetery next to a school, next to a blacksmith shop, next to a quarry. And we were way, way ahead of the curve. And this was used, and this type of zoning, or restriction if you will, is still in effect. They use it in gated communities, for example. But what Olmsted did, if you read this report, it's really quite remarkable, is he tried to achieve social goals. He designed lots in Riverside that were large, so that wealthy people could build houses there. He designed houses in Riverside that were small, so less wealthy people could build houses there. But he created common areas, which he said was intended for everybody to get together on, so that everybody's children could know everybody else, which is pretty much what Riverside is today. So I think as we go into an area right now where it's still confrontational, I mean, you see the Supreme Court is still coming down with decisions one way or the other on how much restriction can be put upon real estate. Olmsted was way ahead of the curve in setting this up. And I think this is what, I'm seeing what's happening with land use control in other parts of the world. England followed us, parts of Europe followed us, and now Asia's starting to follow us. Where they realize that just giving people unfettered control over their property to do as you wish without any thought of what was the common good lends itself to a situation which is not in the common good. But to do this, we would need to do a lot of research. The booklet that is set exists is important, but we would need to get more information, go through Olmsted's papers and assemble those. What I would look for from the Village Board is at least an acknowledgement that they would like me to go ahead and do this without binding you to do this. We moved into Riverside shortly after the National Historic District was there, and that was opposed by the Village Board. And if this board doesn't want to do this, then I'm dropping it because I can't do it, because I can't take it to the Department of Interior. But if the board said, no, we're interested in this, go ahead and do this. Understanding, of course, I'm not binding the board. But if the board expresses that, then I think it's worth assembling, as I said, a group of people. I'm looking for about five or six people. And my criteria are that they not be actively involved in any other aspect of village government. They not be on commissions or boards or elected officials. And they be very interested in Riverside. We can set up the mechanism by which they do a research, and we could set up where they can go and contact with things. I don't think, I'm looking for money for a while. Maybe at some point we'll need to bring an expert in, in which case I would come to the board and ask the board to retain the expert. Right now, I think what we're doing is just acknowledgement by the board that this is something we want to pursue. So there I am. I've opened to questions, and I'm sure there are some.
Questions for Mr. Stack?
Does this place any restrictions on us if we got this designation? Is there any downside to this?
Here's the, no. If the people of Riverside decided that they all wanted a self collectively and turned this area into a, something, what would happen is we would lose the World Heritage Site designation. It's pretty much the same as the National Historic Landscape District. That really does not impact us and the use of our property, with one exception that it can encumber federal funds. Shortly after my wife and I bought our house on Delaplane, NIPSY, the local planning commission, came out with a map. And the map showed that NIPSY proposed extending 31st Street through Riverside, which would have been about six feet from our back door. As you can imagine, that was a pretty kind of terrifying situation. And in that case, the National Historic Registration did help because funds couldn't be used to do that. And that also, the fact that we had Joe Texan, a Riverside resident, on the county board who basically said, burn that map, helped. But, so there are, yeah, I mean, right now, we have some restrictions in the sense that if you're going to use federal funds, you have to be sensitive to the fact that we're a historic district. Does UNESCO do more than that? No. No, they would not, I mean, they're having, as you might imagine, with the Alamo, they're having to debate down in Texas. Our friends, the Texans are, you know, there's people down there, they're afraid that helicopters are going to land and they're going to fly a United Nations flag over the Alamo and so forth. It's, yeah. But the majority of people in Texas seem to be fine about it. They seem to be, like, this is something that they want. And so I guess if Texans are willing to have it, I guess we should be.
So there would be no restrictions on a resident to put an addition? Like, if their home was a historical landmark, there's restrictions they have to go through to add additions or?
Well, they certainly couldn't go beyond the setbacks.
Well, they can't go beyond that.
Yeah, which they can't now. And they would have to do whatever development they're doing within your zoning, within your building code.
People, you can go within, or I'm sorry, the setbacks, if you go to the zoning board of appeals and the board, and it's approved. So does that mean you can't do that?
It means that if we get World Heritage Sites, it might in fact jeopardize it. We have to have a plan in effect. That would be the first question, which is how do you protect your setbacks?
What about houses that have already been?
I would say that they're grandfathered in. I mean, yeah, I mean, we're not going to start knocking houses down.
But would that affect the chance of getting this?
No, I don't think so. Because that's the point we talked about, the authenticity.
But by setbacks, do you actually mean, you don't mean side setbacks or back setbacks? You actually mean the park, the?
The park setbacks.
Yeah, the front.
The front yard.
Mr. Stack, these sites that have been approved to be UNESCO, these sites that have been approved over time to be UNESCO sites, what positive benefits has that brought to these areas?
You know, that's an interesting question. And I think the, I mean, in St. George's, it helps the tourism a little bit. You know, the folks get off the ships and they, you know, it's one of the places to I think it would, it's a prestige thing. It says, this is who we are, this is what we represent. And I think, well, maybe more than prestige. It's going to be an introspection. It's an understanding of what we are, just how important this is. And I think it's going to be a part of history of Riverside that really has not been thought about very much. You have to go back to where the world was back in, after the Civil War. And the huge influence of Olmsted. I mean, Olmsted is a giant, and is being slowly acknowledged worldwide as a giant. And his idea of not merely landscape, because he had landscape cemeteries, and he had landscape parks, and he had landscape things. We're the only people that live in Olmsted Park. That's it. There's nobody else in the world that does. And for him to say, this is how I want this place to operate. I want a combination of wealthy people and not wealthy people. I want them all to get together. I want them all to play in the commons. I want, if you read the report, I want them promenaded on the commons while their children play ball in the commons. And by the way, you know, for those people who are not in love with the report, it was Olmsted who said, I want them playing ball in the commons. And this was his vision of, not utopia, he never used that term, but of a solid and kind of a wonderful place that people would want to live in. People, especially the veterans of the Civil War, who were primarily made up the board of the Riverside Development Company. These guys had been through an absolute hell, and they wanted to live in a place that was quiet and beautiful for their families.
So I think what Mr. Stack has looked forward from us is basically a consensus that we would like him to explore this site even further. I mean, I do think it's important to note that Riverside really is singular in terms of being probably the first conservation design conscious community that was designed in the United States. I mean, things, ideas like transit-oriented development or connectivity with nature or lookability, these were all intrinsic to the general plan of Riverside before they now have become catchphrases, you know, a century later. So certainly I think this is, Riverside is a worthy applicant for this honor. So really, the question for us is would we like Mr. Stack to assemble this committee and move forward with it?
I just have one comment. I'm just conjecturing here, but it would seem to me that if we were successful in gaining this designation, I would think it would enhance any efforts that we made to get grants of any type. Because why wouldn't then the rest of the federal government and such want to protect an UNESCO site?
And it's certainly in keeping, you know, with our current emphasis on trying to create more of a tourism destination for our village.
I think it's great.
I think, yeah, it may very well help with commercial development, tracking the kind of commercial tenants that would be attracted to that sort of stature.
Well, we greatly appreciate you putting this effort together. You have our blessing and.
Okay, now, I don't have, I haven't asked anybody at this point to come forward, and this is not, I'm not going to ask for commitments, as I said. This may be close to eight, nine years before we have the application ready, as you can see by the timelines that I've seen. But what I would like is if you know people who are not currently involved in Riverside, but would like to, I'm not looking for expertise, I'm looking for people who want to go into a library and know how to search on the internet for things. And then we would be together and work on this. There's a lot of research.
So all of you out there in television land who are listening to this, if you're interested in pursuing this and speaking with Mr. Stack about it, you can contact our village manager.
And if anybody here has somebody that you think would fit into this.
The only thing, and I don't mean to tell you what, you know, how to put together a committee, but I wouldn't omit a lot of the talented, wonderful people we have on our commissions. Some of those, some of the people that are on those commissions have such huge knowledge base that I gotta, it's, you know.
Joe, I agree with you entirely. And I mean, I feel free to contact anybody in the village to draw upon them. But in terms of this working group, I want somebody who's dedicated to the working group and to really no other, no other commission. One of the problems that we had, at least when I became on president, was that we had some very, very good people on the commissions, but we had the same people on these commissions. I mean, I had one individual who was simultaneously serving on three different commissions. And I think that bringing in people who want to become involved in Riverside but don't necessarily want to go on a commission or are not comfortable going on a commission for whatever reason, that's the kind of person I'm trying to draw. But yeah, Joe, obviously there are very knowledgeable people in this town. I would have no problem contacting them. We have, by virtue of the Olmsted Society, we have a very excellent collection of material on Olmsted at the Riverside Library. So I mean, we have that, which is a big start.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up this evening, we have a very pleasant opportunity to honor some of our police officers. who recently received the Cook County Sheriff's Award of Merit and Valor. And so, I would ask the officers to come in and our Chief Weitzel, if you would like to lead us through this. Welcome, everyone.
They're shy.
Come on over. Mr. President, trustees, and manager Scolera, it really is my honor to come in front of the board just to brief you on an award ceremony that took place at Moraine Valley Community College, probably six weeks ago, maybe seven weeks ago. And it was for nominees and recipients of the Cook County Sheriff's Award of Valor and Merit. Officer Mike Panic, who's not here tonight, was the recipient of the merit award. Mike is a Navy veteran and is currently in Pensacola, Florida, on his required training for the next two weeks, so he's unable to make it. But Mike was my selection for the... To receive the merit award. That award is a nomination put in by the department head. And you're supposed to put that in for one of your employees that meets the following criteria: excellent dedication and attitude, work ethic, professionalism, and committed to the law enforcement profession. Mike fits that to a T. He did attend the ceremony at Moraine Valley Community College with his wife and children. Along with me at that presentation was President Sales and Manager Scolera, which we were grateful for because, looking around the room that night, there were not that many elected officials and city village managers that attended. There were a few. But after the awards program, my employees that attended that and stopped me either in the parking lot or talked to me the next day and were very appreciative that one of our elected officials, our president and our manager, who run state-of-the-day operations, would take the time out to attend because this was a nighttime event at Moraine Valley Community College. So, Mike was that recipient. The next award was for valor or heroism. It's a little different criteria. It's not automatically given. It goes to a committee that Cook County Sheriff Tom Dart sets up. So, the process is you submit... The chief executive officer submits a nomination to the sheriff. The sheriff sends it to a committee, and that committee reviews on whether it's worthy of a valor heroism award. Now, this year, there were 46 separate agencies that submitted. Only 33 received the award that night, so it shows you that they just don't take any nomination that's put in. So, to receive those awards were Sergeant Frank Pontrelli, Sergeant Leo Coder. Neither are here tonight. They were going to be here. Both have the flu. Officer Dan Morello, who is here, Officer John Cairo, Officer Fabian Navarro, and Communications Officer Cheryl Palermo. This award I put them in for was for an incident that happened in January of 2013 where a juvenile had gone missing, left a suicide note at her home, had gone... Left the home with no shoes, barely any clothes. The weather was extremely nasty that night, including snow, cold weather. Sergeant Coder, who was the shift sergeant that night, realized very quickly when he went to the home that the note, the suicide note that was left was real. The child that was missing, we never had any contact with. And when we contacted school officials, told us the child was a straight A student. Would be very uncommon for her to be like an habitual runaway or to do something that she didn't mean. So, Sergeant Coder, without supervisors on the scene beside himself, Lieutenant Dave Cruel and the chief of police were at home that night until they called us. But they initially started a massive search, including the Riverside Fire Department played an active role. So did our neighboring communities. He requested assistance from all the towns that surround us. And he went one step further and requested a helicopter from the Chicago Police Department, which they responded. And after a three-hour search, they found the juvenile by the Berry Point Bridge, down below by a tree. She was passed out. She was in very poor condition as far as her body temperature. She was transported by Riverside paramedics to the McNeil Hospital. And when officers went there to follow up on that investigation, the emergency room doctor attending said another 30 to 45 minutes and that exposed whether she would have died. So, I put the officers in for this award. And I wrote a personal letter to every chief that assisted my agency and thanked them. And I also advised him that he should put his own employees in for that same award. And one significant difference in this year is we had a civilian, Cheryl Palermo, get an award, which is unusual. Because several years ago, I put an award in for Cheryl through the Sheriff's Award, and they denied it because the award criteria is for sworn law enforcement officers. But I put the team in that worked that night and the team that came in. And I personally called the sheriff's administrative assistant and told them I thought it was unfair that they would leave off one of our civilian employees who managed the police, fire, paramec radios, mutual aid that was coming in, and handled radio traffic between the ISBURN radio that could talk to the helicopter and directed the officers what to do. And after some debate, I was notified by the sheriff's officer that they... That they would allow Cheryl to receive that award. It's one of the first times that that's ever happened. The award isn't meant for sworn officers, but they did make an exception in this case, and I was very happy that they did because they couldn't do their job without her. They all acted as a team. So, I'm very proud of the officers. It was a very nice ceremony. I think the president and manager could back me up on that. And I just wanted to let the rest of the board know about what took place. And some of the officers, you know, their families are here. So, I would ask that, you know, that you might introduce... Dan, your wife and kids are here, right? Have them stand up and introduce them to the board.
Two of them in the hallway. Your wife Rachel, daughter Ava, and I got two in the hallway.
You're competing against iPad, I'm afraid.
And all the officers attended that award ceremony. They could attend and so did their families. And it was really was a very nice night. So, I just wanted to acknowledge their awards and their efforts to the board.
You know, I asked Chief Weitzel to come here tonight to talk about this award because I think it's an example of the really extraordinary police force that we have. And I think that for Chief Weitzel to emphasize the notion of the teamwork that was involved, even without the supervision of the chief or the deputy chief, is just indicative of the kind of the caliber and quality of people we have on our police force. And I'm especially glad that you stood up for our communications officer and got them to recognize a much overdue award there. So, we were extremely proud of all of you. I mean, I think Peter and I, we were very moved by being there and we were proud to be associated with all of you that have done so much for our village. So, would anyone else like to comment or...
I'd like to take a minute and shake their hands.
I think that would be great.
Thank you, very good. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
And, you know, while we're on the subject of folks deserving of honors, I would also like to mention that five of our local young people who are students at Riverside Regional High School also were awarded the 2013 Cook County Sheriff's Medal of Honor. And this is for community service, I believe it's over 100 hours.
That's correct.
Did you want to just brief us on what the criteria were?
Yeah, the Cook County Sheriff, Tom Dart, also has a program for basically high school-age kids that if you put in 100 hours of more community service, you could be nominated by either your school superintendent, the police chief, the fire chief, even an elected official. Once they verify that you have those hours, you can be nominated for a youth service award. We have nominated some of our explorers in the past. This year, there were, I think, five recipients who were nominated by the superintendent's office at the high school. But they notified the local police chief and the president that we would have these outstanding students receiving an award. Their award was given downtown in Chicago at a separate ceremony.
And so, recipients for 2013 are Gregory Cotterbone, Vidas Kulbus, Kennedy Mistrata, Connor Colloden, and Kaylee Houghland. And Chief Weitzel and I have sent letters to all of them congratulating them on behalf of the village for their extraordinary volunteer efforts. So, we congratulate them as well. So, now, we turn the page to enforcement and traffic. And I believe you have some announcements for us concerning that, Chief.
Yes, Mr. President, board, trustees, I have a... Put a memo at your place on the traffic enforcement program for 2014. The program is managed by Sergeant Bill Gutchick and Sergeant Coder. To more... Larger extent, Sergeant Gutchick, because he's on days. Sergeant Coder has now been moved to permanent midnights. So, his intensified enforcement program, I want to just let the trustees and residents know what's going to be taking place in 2014. The program is based on either concerns that the department receives directly from residents or traffic patterns and state data that comes to us for traffic accidents. I have extras here if you need it. And it's a nine-step program, and I'll go through it very quickly and tell you what's going to be happening very shortly, within the next couple of weeks. We're going to solicit public input, which we've already received, through email, just regular mail. We've seen telephone complaints or concerns and people that have directly contacted us on the village's website. We've also searched our own records, and we've used the knowledge of the officers that are on patrol where they feel that the enforcement needs to go. And I will emphasize that almost all of the residents that have contacted us either think increased speed enforcement or stop sign enforcement is where we should be putting our efforts. So, with that in mind, we're going to start to gather data electronically and in person, evaluate that data. That'll be done by both Sergeant Gutchick and Lieutenant Cruel that's standing in the back of the room here. Then they'll assess that data. And then they'll go two routes. Some of the data that can be handled by regular patrol. So, there might be instances where a stop sign is being abused, for example, for Hollywood stops. Well, officers that are on the 3 to 11 shift, if they're not involved handling calls, can park in that area for an hour or so and watch the speed and stop motorists and either issue warnings or citations. If it's a situation where residents want, and we're getting complaints that they really need an intensified enforcement, then we'll move into the intensified enforcement, which was going to be high visibility, what we call Wolfpack-type enforcement. And that is putting officers on five, six officers, these squads, with an unmarked car doing the radar enforcement and calling ahead to the marked cars that'll be in a different position to make the traffic stops. We have done that in the past. The one couple of aspects we're adding this year is officers are going to be standing outside of their police cars, holding the radars so that they become more visible. And residents and commuters that travel these ways every day get to know that the police are going to be out there enforcing that either during rush hour in the morning or rush hour in the afternoon or, in some cases, in the school zones. So, there'll be that enforcement period, but we will do an educational period before that. Those are usually written on state tickets unless they're equipment violations, then they go on local ordinance tickets. The difference is that the local ordinance tickets, the village gets all the money. The state tickets, we get very little. So, then, as the process rolls down, though, identify the target, gather the data, evaluate the data, do the assessment, do the enforcement, probably two phases of enforcement in the same area, gather the data from that enforcement, meaning what was the outcome? How many tickets we issued? How many warnings? How many stops we made? The demographics? And we don't keep demographics of male or female. We keep demographics on whether it's a resident or not because a lot of our residents complain that it's cut-through traffic. So, we want to be able to verify that that's actually happening. And that's very easy data to gather because their addresses are on their driver's licenses. And it's all public information. We'll reevaluate that data and reassess on whether we should run the program there again or we should move to another location. One area that we will be concentrating on immediately is Fairbanks Road and Berry Point Road. The Fairbanks, probably about the 100 block between the two Berry Points. And Berry Point Road between the bridge, the Lions, and just past the Presbyterian Church, by far, that is the number-one complaints that the department receives from our residents is that stretch of area, especially Berry Point between the bridge and the church. We have made some improvements with the striping. The Public Works has made curb cuts so that they have the pedestrian crosswalk there. There's new signage. There's a pedestrian sign on the roadway, and there's the new speed sign we received a grant from the township for. So, that'll all be taking place, and then I'll be reporting back to the board intermittently throughout the year. In 2013, I put a memo in the manager's packet about a month or two ago that we wrote 636 tickets on the program in 2013. So, that does not take into consideration the warnings that were issued. But we don't issue a lot of warnings after the educational period. It will take place village-wide. That's just the first area we'll be concentrating. We have received interest from other areas such as Long Common and Selborn. We've had three or four people contact us that that stop sign is abused all the time and the red flashing light, they say, at Autobahn in Long Common. So, those areas will also be... In addition to the school, we've already set up school enforcement zones for both parking and then the new cellphone texting law.
Chief, did your review of last year's citations bear up that many of them are non-residents or...
Yes, absolutely. They did. And a lot of the motorists will tell you they're getting from... They're coming from... You know, when you only... When you can't enter from Miller Road in the afternoon and you have to go to Ogden or you have to go all the way down to First Avenue, that turn on Joliet Road here to get over the bridge is heavily traveled, especially in the afternoon between 4:00 and 6:30. So, we did concentrate, and a majority of them were individuals that were, you know, cutting through as far as, you know, River Forest, Oak Park, Elmwood Park, not just adjacent communities next to us.
Remember when people used to say they'd get lost driving through the town?
I think Long Common and a few others, they know.
Do you sense that Costco has had an effect on traffic?
Not yet. I haven't received too many complaints from that Berkeley-Bird area. So, outside of... We've received some increased parking complaints because of the new Title Max that some of their clients were parking illegally, but not speed enforcement yet.
So, what is your timeframe here? When you say that enforcement is going to be... It's going to begin after the intensified educational phase. When is that?
We're going to start the educational process tomorrow by press release and eFlash, and then we'll start the enforcement within the next two weeks. We're also going to notify the school districts what we're doing. And we also send out a letter to affected areas. Like, last time when we did Berry Point, we sent out a letter to the pastor that Riverside Presbyterian Church let him know, asked him to read it to his Sunday congregation. So, we notify people that we'll be doing it. And you would think that we would not get a lot of tickets. That's not the case.
So, you're anticipating that there's going to be more traffic enforcement within the village boundaries as opposed to the peripheral streets?
Absolutely. This program, the intensified enforcement, is targeting residential streets.
Berry Point between the bridge and the church, people can park on the east side of Berry Point. Do you think by changing the parking to the west side of Berry Point, would that slow people down coming through town? Because I've had several residents on that stretch ask about moving the parking to the other side of Berry Point. Do you think that would slow people down coming into town?
I don't think... I'm not sure because if you're coming in a northerly direction from the bridge, it will give the cars more space on the northbound direction.
Okay.
But another large... A big hurdle would be to move that... Not that the board, we could change the ordinance, but you would have every resident on that side of Berry Point probably upset that the flip was being made. But... Because I've found that, like, on Forest Avenue, they have that parking restriction for traffic flow. If you notice, they got the two-hour parking when you're going out in the morning and the two-hour parking when you come back. That seems to work well, but that's a different type of geographical area. But I believe the more space you leave open on that street in that direction, the faster the cars will go. Because the reality is that some of the cars will slow down because they can barely make it through. That they're forced to do that.
Have you thought about doing what's on... Switching it by... So that you would have parking on one side of the street during the incoming rush hour on the east side and then on the west side?
No, I haven't. But, you know, that's something that we could look at. The one thing I brought... One of my officers mentioned before the board meeting tonight was, "Why don't we also start putting out a... When we're not using a squad car, let's park a squad car there." a squad car there, unmanned squad car, so that there's a marked car there that may just, when we don't have the manpower to do it, may prevent people that are commuters that are cutting through town. So that's another idea that we're going to incorporate into the program.
So I think the takeaway for all of our residents and all of our residents' friends who drive in our town is stop signs mean stop, our posted speed limits mean what they say, and our police force is going to become increasingly aggressive in enforcing our laws to make everybody safer.
I think that speed monitor on Berry Point's very helpful, you know?
And we are looking into another issue for Fairbanks, I'm looking to see if we could, not as big a unit as that one, but we're looking for grant money to purchase one that could be affixed to a street sign. I've seen some other communities have, and so I'm just trying to see if there's any grants available.
And so before we let Chief Weitzel go, I just wanted to go back, circle back for a second with regard to the awards that our officers received tonight. I mean, one of the things that Mr. Skler and I realized at that award ceremony was how fortunate we are to have a police chief who honors the men and women on his, on his force. He stands for them, he recommends them, and they deserve to be recognized, and we appreciate that, Chief. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Chief.
You know, before we let him go, I want to thank a bunch of people for the past work that was done during the storm, Public Works, Fire Department, for putting in a lot of nights, and of course, Tom, helping out. I know that you worked very closely with Public Works during the storm for plowing and so forth, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Time now for public comment. Would anyone like to address the board before we move on? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the reports of village officers.
There is somebody.
Oh, there, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the hand.
Good evening, I'm Deb Garman, I'm here to represent the Riverside Farmers Market and to let everyone know that doesn't know that we are having a winter market, and it's the first Wednesday of the month starting in February, so February, March, April, May, and then the summer market picks up on the first Wednesday in June. And it'll be at the train station on Wednesdays from 2:30 to 6:30.
What's the date of the first one?
February 5th.
February 5th, thank you.
February 5th.
We have your application in our packet.
Okay, okay.
What type of?
Vendors?
Yeah, what type of things grow during winter?
My wife's lying.
Well, a lot of our vendors are small food purveyors like Chocolate Twist, River Valley has the mushrooms that can grow year-round, Wanderlust Soaps, Bailey will be here with his honey, Lyons Fruit Market's coming with apples and frozen cider, eggs, and succulents and herbs, so we will have some produce. Lou's Old Fashioned Pickles, Loving Tales for the Pet Treats, Primo Pizza will be baking outside, Jake's Meat, and we have two new vendors, Kotik Breads, which is an artisanal bread baker that is very exciting, and Sentimental Teas, she makes tea blends, and she'll be selling those.
And the hours are the same?
2:30 to 6:30, slightly different.
Well, thanks, Deb, thanks very much. Fresh eggs and tea. So moving now to the village president's report, we do have some appointments to be made this evening. First, I'd ask for a motion to appoint the following individuals to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Paul Cuchara, David Lesniak, and Teresa Pelletier for terms to expire June 1, 2015. Paul Sterner and Dennis Gary for terms to expire June 1, 2016. Michael Setevy and Jill Mateo for terms to expire June 1, 2017. And appointing Mr. Setevy as chairperson for a term to expire June 1, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Mr. Pollack, discussion. I just want to say thank you to these folks for agreeing to serve on the newly consolidated parks of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're, later in our meeting tonight, we're going to be talking about their first, their first project, so they'll be busy. So I would ask you please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries. And they are going to be sworn in at their first meeting on January 22nd by village clerk Haley. Next up is a motion to appoint Constance Bardi as chairperson of the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 1, 2016. That's for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Baller, and second by Ms. Collins, discussion. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
And she's in the audience.
And Ms. Bardi is here, and we thank you very much for assuming the mantle for the Historical Commission, look forward to good things. Next up is a motion to appoint Martha Megan as chairperson of the Safe Environment Commission for a term to expire June 1, 2016.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Mr. Foley, discussion, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
And Ms. Neil is right at the back of our camera.
Megan is here, and thank you for taking over the role as chair, and I'm excited they're going to have an increased new focus on public education, so we look forward to seminars on public safety in the near future. So thank you both for coming tonight. The last thing I have is just a short announcement that I received from the Cook County clerk David Orr, and this is regarding 17-year-old voter registration, in case you haven't already heard about this. Beginning January of 2014, most Illinois 17-year-olds will be eligible to register and vote in a primary election. This is a first in our state's history. The new quote suffrage at 17, quote, law will let voters choose in the primary election which candidates will be nominated to represent political parties in the general election. Mr. Orr said, "This expansion of voter registration will allow more young people to participate than ever before, and will also get teenagers registered to vote before they leave high school." And studies show that establishing voting habits early boosts the likelihood of participation for years to come. So if you were born on or before, and this pains me to say, November 4, 1996, I think the shoes I have on, you can register to vote in the March 18, 2014 primary election, because you will be turning 18 by November 4. So if you're out there, if you're a young person, you'd like to get involved in your representative government, we encourage you to please sign up to vote. And just before I turn it over to Mr. Skler, I just want to echo what Mr. Foley said, I mean, as everyone here knows, we've had a brutal spell of weather, and our Public Works and in fact, our whole staff have just done a wonderful job taking care of it and taking care of us, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So next up is the-
You know what, and one more thing while we're talking about cold weather in winter, this weekend, on Saturday evening, is the family skate night at Big Ballpark. The big chill crew has the rink ready, and I believe they'll be there from 5:00 until around 9:30. At the Big Ballpark, there'll be music and skating and hot chocolate and so forth. So I want to let everybody know.
Mr. Skler, your question?
Since you guys did two of the things I was going to do before, then I won't touch on them, but I did want to acknowledge the hard work of the Public Works Police and Fire Staff, in particular, our Public Works Department, who spent a god-knows-how-many-hours of plowing, salting, and ensuring that areas in the village were safe for motorists and pedestrians during the two-week snow and cold snap. But as a result of that cold snap, we have suffered some erosion along the Swan Pond Riverbank, and so staff will be working to backfill some of those areas, so I ask that anyone using the path to please be cautious while they are down there working. Another item that I'd like to just update the community on is in regards to if you were, happened to get stuck with the gates that went down this past week at Riverside Long Common. On two separate occasions, the gates went down, on one occasion, the gates were down for almost two hours, and I wanted to inform the community that in regards to the first one, it was caused due to a signal that was malfunctioning at the Berwin Station, which kind of had a ripple effect down the line. And then the one that happened on Tuesday night, which was for almost two hours, which affected the stops from Cicero all the way to Hinsdale, was a result of a break in a line that signaled to all of the preceding stops that there was a train in the intersection causing the gates to lower. Both issues have been repaired by BNSF, as well as a request by the village to BNSF to increase the frequency of their track maintenance program. You probably see every so often, they have, it looks like a pickup truck that goes by, and that is a truck that has, has some sort of device on it that can locate any broken rails. So they've agreed to increase the frequency, and they also shared with me that during the rush hours, they do have signal maintainers close by on call in the event that there is a break, that they can quickly get on and repair the issue quickly. To them, maybe different to someone stuck with the gate down, so I appreciate the patience and I apologize for the inconvenience that our residents experienced last week. And then the last item, I wanted to encourage anyone out there to visit the Economic Development Facebook page. This is something new that was initiated by the Economic Development Commission, and within a few hours of it going live, the Facebook page is up to 175 likes, which caused the Economic Development Commission Chair to share with us that that's three times more the likes that he has on his Facebook page. So be sure to check it out, it provides updated community event schedules as well as cool pictures of Riverside, and that is all I have.
So when you say that they found a break in the line, you mean an electrical line?
No, an actual one, in the track itself. So it has been repaired, and hopefully we won't have any other breaks.
Any questions for Mr. Skler?
Peter, what's the page called? Because I just put Riverside Economic, and nothing comes up.
Riverside Economic Development Commission, or Economic Development Commission, I think it's backspace or backslash Riverside.
No, Riverside Economic.
Riverside Economic.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Moving now to the approval of the consent agenda. You had a chance to review the items on the consent agenda, did anyone need anything removed for discussion?
I'd like to ask that the two items, that the two items concerning the police department be removed so that we can discuss them separately, please.
So that would be items E and F, correct?
Yes, thank you.
So with the exception, exception of items E and F, anything else? So I'd ask for a motion of the second to approve the consent agenda, A through D and G.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollack, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollack.
Motion carries. So we now return to item E, which is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with current technologies amount not to exceed $30,000 to replace and upgrade the video surveillance system at the Riverside Police Department and Village Hall to an IP-based video surveillance system. Mr. Weitzel is here to answer any questions, Ms. Sussman.
I wanted to, I asked for these to be removed because I'd just like a little bit more discussion, I spoke with the chief today about this, on the process, on what the specifications were, or how the process was.
For the cameras, or the?
Yeah, I, well, maybe for both, more briefly on the cameras, but also on the-
The cameras were-
Chief, if you could, yeah, since we're going to talk about both of them, then let me just read what the other one is, so I can see how we're talking about. Item F is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Tiffin Metal Products, Rev Storage Systems International, and Floor Guard in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to remove the old lockers in the men's and women's locker rooms at the police department, to put down an epoxy-coated floor, and to install new lockers in both locker rooms. All right, Chief?
Well, as far as the lockers, I, there is an added memo and packet at your place update after a meeting today. The process for those lockers were as follows, after, it was included in the budget, we asked for, actually asked for four quotes, we only had three respond. Of those three, Tiffin was the lowest with the installation. Tiffin doesn't do their own installation, they subcontract somebody to do that for them, but it was part of their bid. And then the system, Lieutenant Kruhl, I have him here with me if he wants to answer any technical questions you may have, the lieutenant walked the vendors around to the locker rooms. They came in, they took photos, they took measurements, they asked us questions, asked to the lockers, such as, what was our expectation? Open lockers, shut lockers, lockers that lock, athletic-type lockers. Our criteria was that they needed to have a door which could lock, heavier gauge than what we currently have, they were able to examine what we currently have, a place for the officers to sit so they could put their shoes on and tie them, because we're removing the bench, our plan was to remove the bench that's in there. And then out of the, out of those companies, when we got the bids, when we got the quotes back, the one that was the lowest, Lieutenant Kruhl then contacted other municipalities that had them install the lockers. Lyons used them to put the lockers in their new facility. We researched how long they'd been in business, what the warranty was. On the lockers, the warranty is five years, the company's been in business for 111. I did re, I did talk to Tiffin today after my meeting with the trust, to the trustees, and they do have extra parts. The way they work it is, they keep it, they don't really keep it, if we want to purchase them, we can go ahead and purchase additional locks, et cetera. They keep it in case they install it wrong or they have a malfunction. So they have extra doors, they have extra hinges, they have extra locks. Basically, they said their stock is there when they make a screw-up, but if we'd like to purchase something from them and stock our own department with extra lock systems, they would certainly provide that for us. So they can provide that, they can provide extra doors, extra hinges, and extra folding seats that come out on those lockers. And, and, do you want me to answer any other questions, or?
This actually answers the questions that I had this morning.
And I did submit, in the packet, I put some more information, as the other lockers. And for the IP cameras, we did the same, after it was included in the proof of the budget, we contacted vendors. CTC was the low bid, or low quote. Now, they had vast experience in the seat, in the cameras, they have a separate division than the company that used to handle RIT service. And the one company that gave us a quote was so far off, the low bid, is they wanted to set up two separate systems. They wanted us to keep the old system and gradually take it over, which would require us to have the IP and then maintain the analog system. And that would actually cost us more money in the long run, and then when we go to replace it, when we go through all the cameras, we'd have to get rid of the analog system, they would have to remove that. So I didn't even think that that company even met our requirements. CTC's bid is for all the cameras, including the ones in the village, at the lobby here in the village, and is an IP-based, and it includes storage and maintenance. The other maintenance contract is six months. I suggested a year in addition to that to make it 18 months. It's not required, it comes with the six months, that's pretty standard in the video surveillance field, and I do believe that most of the malfunctions would either happen at the beginning, maybe the first year or two, or at the end of the life of the system. So that, the only special requirement that's in there is the cameras that are needed for the booking room, and the cameras that are needed for the investigation interview room, those are set by state law because we have to videotape and audiotape felony cases. Outside of that, those had a little bit of different requirements, but that's included in the CTC bid, or quote. So I could answer any other questions, or if there's any, or certainly Lieutenant Kruhl can too, because he actually physically dealt with the vendors and walked them around and escorted them through the building when they were here, both for the camera system and for the lockers. The floor is included in the locker, there's a floor bid for just under $3,000. Our plan is to get rid of the carpet, which is glued directly to the cement and put in that epoxy-type of flooring system. I don't think it'd be much more different than what you've seen at the Fire Department.
I think what's important for people to understand is the new lockers are considerably deeper than the old lockers. So to do this in piecemeal, to say, do the floors and then, you know, until touring this night, I had a problem with lockers, because I'm thinking, I can go back to RV and probably still get into my locker that, you know, that I used, I don't know, 20 years ago, give or take.
Nice try, Joe.
But then again, I didn't store none in my locker at RB. These are much more specialized lockers. I mean, they're deeper, they're made for the vests, the equipment you all carry and everything, the security is obviously very important. But to do it piecemeal, that would mean you'd have parts of the locker on top of glued-down carpet, parts of the locker on this new flooring, then if you ever had to do it, then you'd have to, it would be, I think, to do the job is to do it right, and do it right the first time, and it will save us money as we move down the road. Thank you for all the work and for answering the questions and taking the time with us this morning.
Yes, thank you.
And so in advance of our village attorney, because there was technically not an RMP issued, even though multiple quotes were received, I would ask for a motion to waive competitive bidding and to authorize a resolution for the village manager to execute a contract with current technologies amount not to exceed $30,000 to replace and upgrade the video surveillance system at the Riverside Police Department and Village Hall.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Mr. Baller. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hammond.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Motion carries. And now I would ask for a motion to waive competitive bidding, authorizing a resolution for the village manager to execute a contract with Tiffin Metal Products for an amount not to exceed $25,000 concerning the lockers and the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hammond.
Aye.
Trustee Powell.
Aye.
Trustee Baller.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make one other comment. I just wanted to, for people who may be watching from home, that this was a part of our capital plan. These projects were approved and discussed at great length when we put together the capital plan for 2014, and we asked the chief to come back with the actual proposal at this point, and he did, and the lieutenant did too, and so I want to thank them for the work on this.
Thank you.
And I also want to know if there's going to be an open house in the locker room?
Well, Doug won't bite you down to see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you. We don't have any reports of departments or commissions this evening, so we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the village code of the village of Riverside relative to membership terms, functions, and duties, and other aspects of various village commissions. And let me ask the attorneys, what's the best way to proceed on this technically, just to have a blanket motion for all of the proposed changes?
I think so. I mean, it's all based on previous discussions.
Previous conversations.
Yeah, then if more need to be made.
Okay. So I'd ask for said motion.
Motion moved.
Motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. So you will notice that the, I can point out the changes from what we talked about last time. In the ensuing weeks, we had mentioned at the last meeting the possibility of whether we wanted to try to, to the extent that we can, within the statutory framework of the Illinois statutes, if we wanted to try to standardize some of the terms and also the membership of some of the various commissions. So there is a number, there are a number of changes in here with regard to that. None of the affected commissions had any difficulty with any of those proposed changes. And the other change of some significance would be on page four, and this is under the Landscape Advisory Commission, section 2-14-5. It was requested by a trustee at the last meeting to include this section on park and parkway plantings. That is actually a section that I would like to have some further discussion on. But before we get to that, I would ask if any of the trustees have any items with regard to any of the changes that they would like to discuss.
I have some questions, please. I want to start by pointing out that there were several emails sent to us from members of the Landscape Advisory Commission, asking for at least something changed in the ordinance to give them, if I understand correctly, the right to review or to be included in the discussion on the downtown, on the CBD.
Right.
So I think that that's something that we should talk about, because my understanding, Ellen, maybe this is something you, that it came up at the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Is it something we should be discussing?
If you wish to discuss it, we can discuss it.
I would like to do that. I have a couple of small questions, too. I noticed that for one of the commissions, I think the first one mentioned, it says that the president of the board will name the head of the commission, the chair of the commission, but it doesn't say that for the other commissions. My understanding was the intent was that you would be?
Where do you see, where do you see the?
You know, I spent so much time on this last time, I'm trying to save everybody from...
The reason that was taken out of all of the various individual commissions is because it now exists in the preamble.
Oh, okay, then it's under the LAC, then?
Right.
Okay, I didn't realize that. Under the LAC, it says that you'll appoint, that the president will appoint.
Oh, it still does?
Yeah. It's in 214-3.
Under 214-3.
Yeah, and I noticed that that was the only time.
Okay, so that should be struck, because that's taken care of in earlier language.
Is that the case, though, with all of them?
Yes.
Because it's in the preamble?
Yes.
That's why, okay. Then I had another question. I noticed that the historical commission, as a part of what they do, they are to submit an annual plan. But if I read this correctly, they are the only commission that will be, not an annual plan, but an annual report, excuse me?
With regard to the budget?
Is it only with regard to the budget? Did I not read that correctly?
I believe it's only with regard to the budget. We spoke about that with the village attorney, and the reason we have deleted that section with regard to the other commissions, and the reason we left it in with regard to historical is because they have a separate fund rate fee.
Right, okay, that's what I wondered about, if that was the reason. I have, do have a question, so it's on page three, item D, under duties of landscape advisory. It's just a question about word choice, to cooperate with public organizations working to preserve or improve the public landscape. We mean private and public organizations, right? I mean, we really mean something like the Olmstead. That's not a, I don't know quite what you mean by public, I guess I would just take out public altogether, to cooperate with other organizations.
That was language submitted by the LAC.
Oh, okay.
So in item D, strike public?
Yeah. Okay, I have one. When you talk about, for instance, when we talk about the EDC, and talk about to prepare and recommend to the village board a plan accomplishing the goals, are we saying that every four years, or just when it's needed?
What page do you want?
I'm sorry, page eight? I thought maybe you'd have this memorized, you've spent so much time on it.
Pretty close.
So it's page eight, under duties? B? When you talk about having a plan, when it's needed, you think, or when the board of trustees requests it?
Isn't it an ongoing thing?
Yeah, it's really an ongoing thing, unless you want to specify.
No, I don't want to specify.
I didn't think of it as being something that's cast and sold.
Oh, I thought of it as a...
And that's existing language.
Okay, that's fine, no, that's fine, if that's, if other people got it. And I have one more question. And this actually goes to something that I raised last time, and it has to do with the preservation commission not being involved with, well, let's see, it's page 11, number six. And it has to go with what is, constitutes, what are the contributing factors or the contributing buildings to our national historic designation, whether the downtown area is a part of that or not a part of it, the CBD is a part of it or not. So that's one of my questions, because if it is, then I think preservation should be involved. And then my second question has to do with comments that were made to me during the meeting in December. December, no, yes. Concerning where preservation has, where preservation actually gets involved. And under number 11, excuse me, under number six, it says that preservation will review all proposed zoning and subdivision amendments and road construction plans, and report back to the board the effect on the national landmark designation of the village. So at the last meeting, several people said to me that preservation really only comments on national historic landmark buildings, but clearly they comment on everything and on the effect on the general national landmark designation. And so I'm repeating my question, and actually my request, that the CBD not be left out of this. If preservation comments on other zoning, as is given documentation on proposed other zoning changes, or on those kinds of issues, or road changes, then I think they should also be given the duty of commenting on what is being proposed for the CBD. Because it's clearly more than just a designation of a specific house. So that's repeating that, because I understood, or I think comments that were not, didn't quite represent this, were made at the last meeting. And I had initially agreed to that, but then when I went back and reread it, I thought, well, heck, they comment on other parts of the village, why wouldn't they be involved in the CBD as well?
I can't speak to this without having more documentation in front of me, but it was my understanding that the, first of all, that Frederick Olmstead didn't even contemplate the CBD when he designed this village, and that our designation as a national historic landmark has to do with the totality of the design of the village, and not with our central business district, which really is, has very few historic buildings in it. Those buildings that are historic will be under the purview of the preservation committee, but those that are not, I don't see where changes in that should be under their purview.
Because the preservation commission, one of their responsibilities is to comment on any changes in zoning, as this says, and subdivision amendments, and road construction. So they're already doing it, they're doing more than just commenting on, number one, on buildings that are designated as historic buildings. And number two, the national historic designation has to do with buildings that contribute to that designation, and those include all buildings over the age of 50. So there are a number of buildings in the downtown area that actually are contributing buildings to our designation. So those are the two reasons that I wanted to bring it up again. If preservation were only responsible for those homes deemed national, preserved homes historic?
Are we talking about homes or commercial buildings?
Well, this is, this says in here, they're responsible for everything else in the village where their proposed zoning and subdivision amendments and road construction. So my question is, why, if they already are commenting on the rest of the village, why are we changing it such that they are not commenting on the downtown? Because we are a national historic landmark town, or homes are, not just because of Olmstead, but because of the other architects that were involved in this town. And I don't understand why we're saying preservation should continue to comment on everything except the CBD, why that change is being made.
Help me understand where you're going. If I have a historical home, and I want to do an addition or change it in some way, I need to go in front of the preservation committee?
Correct.
Okay. If I have a non-historical home, like I have, and I want to do changes or any additions to it, I don't have to take that step?
Correct. But I'm not talking, sorry.
Okay. What is the difference between that analogy and the analogy in the CBD, where if we have a historic structure in the CBD, one that's on, and there are changes are to be made to that, preservation should have a say. But on the other hand, if there's non-historical structures and business owners want to do changes to the exterior of their business, or to their whatever, why is that any different than homeowners?
I agree with what you're saying, and in fact, I'm not referring to individual buildings, Joe. I'm referring to number six on page 11, which says that one of their responsibilities is to review proposed zoning and subdivision amendments and road construction plans, and report to the village the effect thereof on the national landmark designation of the village. So this does not refer to changes in individual buildings. It refers to zoning amendments, road construction changes, and any kind of subdivisions that we might want to do. So my question is, if they're still responsible for reporting on those non-site-specific types of things for everything else in the village, why are we changing the ordinance to exclude the CBD? If it's a question of how quickly decisions are made or reports are submitted to the village, let's speed up the process. But I don't want to throw out the baby with the baby water.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't want to do that either.
Go ahead, Doc.
So my question, though, is, on number six, is, are we actually doing that? Or have we been doing that?
That's worth...
I mean, so every time we repave a street, does historic preservation comment on it?
We have not.
Every time there's a zoning amendment, does this preservation comment on it?
It's given to them, isn't it? I thought it was. Oh, it's not?
And for what it's worth, I will note that the preservation commission is having trouble with this change.
Only if the downtown buildings are a part of the national landmark. When I spoke with the chair, it was whether or not the downtown actually was contributing structures to the designation.
And also, this language tracks a language in the site plan review that we've already passed.
Right, and I disagree with that then, but I'm just pointing out here that this makes no...
I understand you disagree with it, but we did pass it.
I'm just saying, do I have this at all? I mean, this is kind of a...
Well, that's what I'm...
Well, I think I can speak to that.
You've almost convinced me to take it out.
Well, I mean, the reason it's there, and this is comparable, I think, to the other question that you had about the business districts with regard to landscape advisory. The, and maybe I can combine the two. The real point of the preservation commission, the landscape advisory commission, has always been to maintain the integrity of the landscape architecture of the village, and regard to our designation. The way that has split out over time is that preservation has concentrated on the historic structures, and the LAC has concentrated on the parts that, as Trustee Hamilton has pointed out, are typically considered to be part of the landscape architecture, namely the commonest, or the triangle parks, the...
The public parks.
Streets, you know, all that. So the, and this, and in keeping with the recommendations, because this was all spawned by the recommendations of CMAP, was specifically to try to speed up the process of efforts within the business districts by eliminating the necessary review of the preservation commission and LAC. That's why we did all of the work on the site plan review. And that's exactly what these revisions now are basically completing with regard to LAC and the preservation commission. So the, and I think it's, you know, we have a professional staff that is aware that we're a landmark village. And if they feel like they need advice from advisory commissions, or we feel like we need advice from advisory commissions, we can always ask for it. What we're trying to do here is take out the layers of bureaucracy that currently exist.
Then why does number six exist at all to...
I'm trying to take it out, if that's what you prefer.
I mean, my whole point was, why? It looks as if you're somehow penalizing preservation in the CBD.
So do you want to move to remove it?
No, I don't, but Doug, I think, might.
Sure, I will.
So should we do amendments surrano, or should we collect them all?
Yeah, I would, it'd be more efficient to just collect them, since it seems like you have...
Give me what the page is. Page 11.
Okay, thank you.
And it's number six.
Number six. So the motion would be to eliminate...
The entire paragraph.
Number six in its entirety, and renumber accordingly.
All right. I have a question. Cable Commission, page nine.
I still have a question. I don't believe you're finished.
I'm sorry.
He's reciting.
He said he's collecting them all. Okay, well, then I still have a little more question, but I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, finish, finish.
To cable.
No, I think we're going to collect them. I mean, unless somebody wants to preserve a vote on an individual, which you certainly have the right to do.
Let's do them individually. Let's do them individually, that way it'll be nice and clean. So first...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did you have something else in that section?
I still have a question about number six.
Okay.
Because it's not clear to me that we determine whether or not the downtown is a part of the town that contributes to the national landmark status. We've had talking, we've talked about that, you know, as part of the contributing buildings or not? Do we know, do we have an answer to that? I thought the answer was yes, that they are contributing.
If the buildings are on, if the individual buildings are on national landmark status...
No, that's a different thing. This has to do with the designation of which parts of the town and the buildings that are over 50 years are old are contributing. My house, for instance, is not a national historic landmark house, but it's a contributing... My house, for instance, is not a national historic landmark house, but it's a contributing structure to the designation of us as a national landmark historic, whatever it is.
Staff's research found that the boundaries of the national historic district includes the entire village, even the CBD.
That's what I thought.
And so what that means is that, according to the Chair of the Preservation Commission, the structures, because most of them, any structure that is 50 years or older is considered a contributing structure, according to the Chair. But one of the things that I guess we haven't really been able to answer and get further clarification on is, are they contributing or non-contributing, or is he just opinion?
Well, I go back to Joe's question then, which is, if his house is over 50 years old, but it's not on the register, he doesn't have to go before any board. So why should anyone in the-
Those are two, they don't have to. Those are two different things. They're two different things.
Trustee Hamilton does have a point in that the national, the national district is part of the landscape portion, not-
Not for the buildings.
But it's contributing, I thought it was all about contributing structures. I mean, that's what that whole, remember the, I think it was before you, actually, all the survey was done? So the fact that there are homes that have national historic designation is different than our designation as a national landmark town. And I thought all structures over 50 years old, which was the issue about the downtown, were contributing structures.
But what does it matter if those structures, even if they're contributing structures, don't have to go through any special review or approval? What does it matter whether they're contributing or not?
For me, it matters, because I think that Preservation should be involved in any kind of landscape changes that are proposed for the downtown. That's it.
But why would they be, why should they be involved with landscape changes to the downtown if they're not involved in landscape changes to the individual houses that aren't on the register?
Because I happen to think that the downtown is something Preservation should be involved with.
Well, I don't.
I'm not disagreeing on this, but that's, you know.
So did you have something other than this?
No, I just wanted to ask.
Okay, so first I'd ask for a motion to amend the motion to exclude item six on page 11 and to reorder accordingly.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Nay.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Amendment carries.
One more on Preservation.
Please.
Number 10, is that also something on page 11, too? Do we actually get annual report?
We haven't, to my knowledge.
Is that something?
You do.
Okay.
It was included in the schedule last week.
The annual report basically summarizes the activity of the commission and then what action-
It showed the attendance and it showed-
Oh, that was, oh, okay.
That's the annual report.
Okay, so there you have it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Valerie?
Yeah, section, page nine. So make sure I'm reading this right. The Cable Commission, Department of Labor, Department of Commerce, Commission, we do file a budget every year because we have members of all kinds of equipment that we purchase. We also bring revenue in as well as expenses out. Under this, we would no longer file a budget.
Which one is that?
It's number 224.5 that was removed.
Does the existing ordinance require the filing of a budget? Do you know?
Well, I, first of all, I think this whole thing is kind of screwed up because under, it's got 225.3, Commission membership, we start talking about the Cable Commission. It's got A and B, and then section six starts talking about noxious weeds.
Yeah, I wondered about that, too.
And then how are we supposed to destroy noxious weeds?
That's because of how the ordinance has to be presented for voting. But yeah, but it's, but what I, I mean, if we-
This isn't the full ordinance, this is just-
No, that's just a part of the ordinance. But what I can't remember is whether the current Cable Commission ordinance requires the filing of a budget.
Usually if there is more than subsections A and B in there, in this particular section, unless it's a separate section later in the, don't we have a code in back that we can take a look at?
Peter, can you take a look at that law?
Sure.
Something else. We're going to find out.
Okay.
For you.
And explain to me again why I got noxious weeds on the bottom of my Cable Commission?
Well, that's a new, that's a new section of the ordinance.
It's a new section. The way, the way this has to be drafted for, technically for the actual implementation of the changes are the various sections, and not the sections it has in the existing code sections. So section, section six that you're looking at goes to the change of subsection A of section 772. You asked.
Maybe you guys are concerned with weeds.
So now the Cable Commission is in charge of noxious weeds?
Yes.
So?
No? I got it.
So while we're looking up the item on them, Cable Commission will turn back to the one that I wanted to have some further discussion on, which is on page four, 2-14-5, Park and Parkway plantings. And I just have a, just a policy objection to this kind of language in an ordinance. I think it goes to exactly the same argument we were having last time as to whether or not we should have specific documents cited within an ordinance. Because I believe that to cite a particular document, like the Striker Report, the Kessler Report, elevates that to kind of iconic status. And I don't think that's appropriate for, I don't think that's appropriate for code. And this language, I think, is similar. I mean, this, the, as you read through this language, I think you will see that this, that this is an interpretation of one perspective of an Olmsted concept. And, you know, and sometimes I think, you know, that we forget that, you know, that Frederick Olmsted or Keller Fox never planted a plant in this village. They never provided us with a list of plants for this village. They provided us with the general plan. And everything that's come since then has been the interpretation and the work of other hands and minds, including this. And in my conception of codification is that you want to leave it open so that it's a living document, so that as time goes on, people can have different ideas and different implementations of the overarching vision of the ordinance. And I believe personally that with regard to the LAC, you get that in the earlier language of the ordinance. When we talk about the planning to research, study, and become familiar with the planning concepts and principles of Frederick Long Olmsted and the Olmsted Fox and Company firm, when we talk about the development of the master landscape plan in accordance with the theories, concepts, and principles of Frederick Long Olmsted, I think that that is sufficient to guide this and any future Landscape Advisory Commission. I don't think we need to dictate to them one particular viewpoint about what that means. And in my view, that's what 2-14-5 does. So I would, personally, I would exclude that language from the code.
At the last meeting, we talked also about suggesting to any of these commissions that it would be a good idea for them to draw up a document, a legacy document, that states their mission and their duty. You know, we are setting forth, we're codifying what their instructions are. But they have a mission that they are following. We have laid out the broad outline of that mission, and I think this language that you're seeking to have removed is their language that belongs in their mission statement, not in the code, but in their mission statement. That's my belief.
I agree with Ellen. I think that it's overstepping putting it in here. It is more of a document for them to go by when they're doing their work, rather than for it to be something in the village code. It's my personal opinion.
I agree. And what's really lacking here is there's nothing that says what this means. It's just, it's descriptive, but doesn't say they shall follow these guidelines in doing their work or anything like that.
It's kind of like now, yeah.
It's like, so, yeah, it may be appropriate for a master landscape plan, but it's certainly not appropriate for the code.
I'd like to see it taken out.
So I ask for a motion, second, to exclude this language?
I'll move it.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foley. Further discussion? And Mr. Mars, I don't know, I believe this is the last section, so I don't know if we need to reserve this numbering or not, but-
Right, that's fine.
You can make that determination.
Yeah, the reserve is typically when it's between things.
So if there's no further comment, discussion?
I have no further discussion on that, but can I address Joe's question for a minute? Because, Joe, are you referring to 224.5? Because that actually belongs to the Economic Development Commission. It doesn't belong to the Cable Commission. That's part of section four. And then the Cable Commission starts with section five.
Right, but he's saying he does need a budget for the Cable Commission.
Okay, so he's not referring to the fact that it's been removed here?
He's wanting everything.
He's saying he wants something added to his.
Yes.
Okay. I thought he was referring to the fact-
Aren't we supposed to be voting right now anyway?
Right.
Oh, okay, all right.
I mean, there was a motion.
Okay, sorry.
So if you can call the roll on that amendment, that's okay.
Trustee Sussman.
Nay.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Amendment carries. Excuse us just one second. Let's take a look at the Cable Commission question.
In the village code, there's nothing in here that says the Cable Commission has to provide. I didn't see.
But Joe, it's similar to the historic commission, historical commission, right? Because it gets outside revenues.
Correct.
I mean, there's a, in there, there's a catch-all in other such requirements as the board may make, so that could be what the budget was done under.
Yeah, at this point, the existing, the existing code does not require filing of an annual budget. I mean, if that's something that you think you might want to do, you could talk to the Cable Commission and break it back.
I think it doesn't, there isn't anything new that requires a filing of a budget because the Cable Commission works with the finance directors in putting a budget together that is included in the village's overall operating budget.
So it would be really included in the catch-all?
In the catch-all.
Because otherwise required, it's required as part of the budget process because of where the revenue comes from.
Correct.
So we're, why do you don't, Ms. Collins, who I believe is policing the crowd outside?
Did you give them the evil eye?
And it suddenly got very eerily quiet.
It's the mom look.
It's the mom look.
So, anything else on these changes? In hearing none, I would ask, well, we already have the motion to approve, right?
Right, there was, but there was one, original one, which was an amendment that you didn't vote on. It was to take out the first sentence of section 2 hyphen 14 hyphen 3. The president, the village president shall designate the chairperson of the commission, meaning the LAC. That one, we were just sort of getting consensus. Since we're doing this procedure, it should be subject also to an amendment, I think. And then you can just take a vote on the original motion as amended as we're done.
And how about excluding the word "public"?
Oh, right, there's that one, too.
Okay, so we'll do those back to back.
Yeah, that would be D. So the motion would be to amend section 2 hyphen 14 hyphen 3, to delete the first sentence, and to amend the text of 2 hyphen 14 hyphen 4, D as in dog, to eliminate the word "public" as it is in front of the word "organizations."
Ask for a motion.
Can't we do those together then?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
I mean, as long as no one wants to vote on them separately.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton. Second by Mr. Foley. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Amendment carries. And now a vote overall on the approval in ordinance of ending various sections of the village code, the village riverside relative to membership terms, functions, and duties, and other aspects of various village commissions. Please call the roll.
If this vote is on, the original motion with all those amendments that pass.
As amended. Yeah. Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Gallary.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. So that's all we have on ordinances and resolutions. We move now to just general discussion and considerations. The first is a discussion of the February strategy meeting. At that, at that meeting, I am working with Mrs. Claire right now to provide a summary memorandum of work and accomplishments over the last, what?
Do we have the date for that?
It'll be our first meeting.
Oh, and our first meeting. Oh, okay, thanks.
And basically, a summary of what's been done to date, and also the status of the various CMAP implementation priorities that we've already identified. So you'll be getting that within the next couple of days. The other thing that we're going to be needing to talk about at that meeting is whether or not we are going to pursue the bond referendum on the rollover bonds from the expiring road bonds. So that will also be another discussion. And Director Francis is preparing a memorandum for us about different scenarios in terms of timing, the limits of, you know, various, the length of various bonds if we decided to do this. So that will be something else that we'll be talking about in February. So I guess what I would ask is, in the next, in the next week or so, if you have specific items that you would like addressed at the strategy session, if you can please get them to me, and then I will compile them and send around an agenda for the meeting to everyone prior to our February meeting. And then the other thing to talk about is with regard to the planning and zoning commission. If you'll recall, back when we asked for input from the various commissions, the then-planned commission specifically stated that they thought it would be important to conduct a comprehensive review of the sign ordinance, with a particular focus on discussing eliminating box signs, for example, within the B2 district. And as then-chairman Covel put it, moving to a more form-based code, incentivizing signs that comply with village aesthetics and character, and discouraging and preventing signs that do not, and revisiting the subjects of projecting signs and banner signs. So the, we do have one commissioner, new commissioner, Mr. Gary, who is currently traveling in Europe and will not be back till the end of the month. So he will not be there at the first meeting in January. But it would be, it will be an opportunity for the commission to meet this month to talk generally about planning their future work. So the question is, do we want to task them with this sign ordinance review?
Yes. I am much in favor of that.
Yes, okay. So it looks like that's the only thing really of pressing concern that had been requested by the planning commission at that time. So if you can pass that along to them. Anything with regard to those topics or any new business for anyone?
Do you want to hold off on talking about the aggregate? Thank you.
If you want to mention it, I mean, we can, you can give a general outline of what you have in mind, and then we can talk about it in more depth.
So I approached President Sells, and we talked about the exposed aggregate issue that we have in the village, and how it pertains to sidewalks in front of people's homes and driveway aprons. I personally would like to see us go away from the exposed aggregate for many reasons. And I'm working now with the permission of Peter, with Ed Bailey, our Public Works Director, coming up with some costs to be able to show the board the cost savings that we would see going back to a broomed concrete finish walk. Have found out that the exposed aggregate is not a preferred surface for ADA issues. It's not compliant in an ADA environment. I don't think that it is fair to make the homeowner endure the cost of doing exposed aggregate in front of their home or their apron. In some instances, some of the aprons in this town are a little bit too steep for exposed aggregate, and in this weather, it's hard to get traction with your car. Exposed aggregate, in my mind, having it in front of my home is an extremely slippery surface, when you don't shovel it as diligently as I make my kids. And so we're going to talk about it, and how it pertains to that, and what we should do about the CBD with the exposed aggregate. There is no consistency to aggregate from one company to another when the product is[1799.22] When the product is delivered and set in the ground, there is no -- and we saw that in the CBD when we switched from the Swanich Stone and went to the smaller pea gravel. There's no consistency from one concrete yard or supplier to another. And I don't think the longevity of an exposed aggregate walk is nearly as good as a broomed finished walk. So if we, as a village, are saddled with the expense and not waiting for the homeowners to burden themselves replacing the squares, I think that we will get definitely much more bang for our buck by going back to a broomed concrete walk. I never understood the reason that we went to exposed aggregate, nowhere is it said that it certainly was an Olmsted thing, and it didn't really have exposed aggregate back then. So I would like to investigate it. If we're going to -- Mr. Bailey made it very aware to us that we have a lot of trip hazards, we have a lot of spalling going on with our squares, and if we can save two, almost three dollars a square foot with 25 square feet in each square, because the squares are five by five, that's a considerable savings, and to the point where, for every two, we get one free, just by going back to a broomed concrete environment. And since the apron thing has not been in place very long, and not many aprons have been replaced to exposed aggregate, we can kind of head this off before it gets out of hand. But those are my feelings on it, and we'll come back with more information down the road.
And one thought with regard to that is, Mr. Bailey is pursuing the -- looking at the -- getting the company or CMAP interns to do a village-wide review of, you know, the condition of our sidewalks. So at that point, we will, to your point, we will have a good idea of what we're looking at in terms of how much we need to either repair or replace. And so this would probably be a good time to have that conversation. So when we have that all together, it looks like there's agreement that we should talk about this. Yes, okay.
Do we have any -- we have some streets coming online to be redone, so.
The only street that will be repaved in 2014 is York Road.
And will you generally do the aprons when -- if one of the streets --
No, just curbed.
So we won't have any aprons to deal with that?
And the stretch of York Road that's being repaved, I don't believe.
I think there's two.
Yeah, there's two.
Maybe three.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're in order. Okay, so that's fine.
And we do have need for an executive session tonight for a discussion of collective negotiating matters between public employers and the employers or representatives, and also a discussion of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. So I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to a second session, not to reconvene, and no action will be taken for the executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Sussman.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.